Good evening, members of the Cerritos Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like to hereby call two meetings to order with both meetings running concurrently. The first, the Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, 7:00 p.m., regular meeting of the Planning Commission. And the second, the Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025, 7:00 p.m., special meeting of the Planning Commission. At this time, if everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item this evening, item 3A, roll call. When I call your name, please confirm your attendance with either a "here" or a "present." Commissioner Al, Commissioner Chowhan, Commissioner Javeri, noted absent for the record, Commissioner Polito.
Present.
And Commissioner Reyes.
Here.
All Commissioners noted present for the record, with the exception of Commissioner Javeri. At this time, I will call for a motion of members of the Planning Commission to excuse Commissioner Javeri from the meeting this evening, if desired by the Planning Commission.
Move the excuse.
Thank you. A motion by Commissioner Reyes. Do we have a second? A second by Commissioner Chowhan. And any objections? No? Thank you. Commissioner Javeri, excuse from this evening's meeting. Thank you. All right, next item. This next item is the annual reorganization of the Planning Commission. This item was on the special meeting agenda. In light of the recent municipal election and the transition of the three new members of the Cerritos Planning Commission, I hereby declare the position of Chairperson of the Planning Commission vacant. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations from the Commission for the position of Chair. Do I have any nominations?
I move that I nominate Loris Polito as the Chair for Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Reyes. Do I have a...
My second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Do I have any subsequent motions? Okay. At this time, I will do a roll call vote confirming Commissioner Polito as Chair of the Planning Commission. We'll begin. Commissioner Al?
Yes.
Commissioner Chowhan? Commissioner Javeri noted absent. Commissioner Polito?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Thank you. With four votes, I now call Commissioner Gloria Polito as Chair of the Cerritos Planning Commission. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will, for the benefit of the audience and those in attendance, we will take a slight recess in just a moment to reorganize up at the dais. But before doing so, I would like to also declare the position of Vice Chair vacant and call for any nominations for Vice Chair of the Cerritos Planning Commission. At this time, do I have any nominations for the position of Vice Chair?
I would like to entertain a motion to nominate Armin Reyes as Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Polito. Do I have a second for Commissioner Reyes for Vice Chair?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, at this time, we'll do a roll call vote for Commissioner Reyes for Vice Chair of the Cerritos Planning Commission. Commissioner Al?
Yes.
Commissioner Chowhan?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Javeri noted absent. Chair Polito?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reyes?
Yes.
Thank you. By a vote of four to zero, Commissioner Reyes is now Vice Chair Reyes of the Cerritos Planning Commission. Thank you. And with that, we will go ahead and take just a brief recess to reorganize for the Chair and the Vice Chair to take their seats.
I call this, the Planning Commission meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is item number four, public comments and suggestions. This section is reserved for public comment on consent calendar and items not listed on the agenda, but there within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Verbal comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, subject to the Chair, extending to a maximum of five minutes per speaker with a total time allotted not to exceed 45 minutes unless the Chair extends. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment at this time? I move that public comments be closed. And then, next on the agenda is item number five, consent calendar. Five-day approval of the minutes of Wednesday, February 5th, 2025. I would like to... Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Director Aguilera.
No, absolutely. Thank you, Chair Polito, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Commission again. Prior to consideration of the minutes this evening, I want to just make a note for the newly appointed members of the Commission. Although you were not present as a Commissioner at the February 5th Planning Commission meeting, you were reviewing the minutes this evening for accuracy of events during that February 5th meeting. So, for any of you, or either of you who you were either in the audience at the February 5th Planning Commission meeting, or if you have reviewed the meeting recording or transcript of the meeting, you are therefore eligible to vote on these minutes. So although you were not a member of the Planning Commission, you can, if you watched the video, heard the transcript, or were in attendance, you can vote this evening. Otherwise, it would be appropriate for you to abstain on any vote related to these minutes this evening. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair to call for a motion, or to make a motion, for the approval of the minutes of February 5th, subject to any edits at the pleasure of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Director Aguilera. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
Assistant Chair, I have watched this video, the whole 65 minutes of it, and I can attest that it's precise and accurate, the minutes. So, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 5th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Chowhan. Ms. Aguilera?
Thank you, Chair Polito. A motion was made by Commissioner Al and a second by Commissioner Chowhan. At this moment, we're going to try out the electronic voting. If any members of the Commission this evening have any technical difficulties, please let me know, and I'm happy to do a verbal or oral roll call vote. So in one moment, I'll activate the vote. Commissioners may make their... place their vote.
My screen is not working at this time.
Okay. In that case, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Al?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner... Thank you. Commissioner Chowhan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Abstain.
And Chair Polito?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes by a vote of three to zero with Vice Chair Reyes' abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Aguilera. Next is item number six, new and old business. Item 6A. Ms. Aguilera, who will make the staff report today?
Thank you, Chair Polito. So item 6A this evening is a residential project, and it is what we call a precise plan. It's Precise Plan 2025-4. To provide just a brief little context to the Planning Commission, in the city of Cerritos, excuse me, any large, single-family residential project, so generally speaking, projects 900 square feet or greater, or any substantial exterior remodel that perhaps may alter, or change, or modify the front elevation of a home is subject to review and consideration by the Planning Commission. So tonight's first item under 6A is Precise Plan 2025-4. And for details of the presentation, I will turn your attention to Associate Planner Matray Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. Good evening, Chair and members of the Cerritos Planning Commission. Property owners of 129200 Bichard Avenue are requesting approval of Precise Plan 2025-4 to demolish an existing single-story residence and in a detached garage and construct a new two-story residence with a new three-car garage. For details of the proposal, I'd like to direct your attention to the screen for a brief presentation. This is an aerial photo of the subject property, which is generally located east of Bloomfield Avenue and south of South Street. This is an enlarged aerial view that shows the details of the property. The property is bordered on the north and south by single-family homes on properties that are zone RS 6500. The property is bordered on the east by single-family homes on property zone Area Development Plan 4. And to the west is Bichard Avenue, a 60-foot-wide residential street across from which our residential properties also zone RS 6500. This is a view of the front elevation of the existing single-family residence. The subject property currently contains several conditions that do not comply with the Cerritos Municipal Code or the city's standards for residential properties. Here you can see unpermitted awnings over the windows, which will be removed with the demolition of this home. Also, you can see there is no pedestrian walkway in front of the subject property. As part of the proposed project, the applicant will be required to install a... to install a public pedestrian sidewalk and parkway, and a new parkway tree, subject to the dedication of the sidewalk and parkway easements to the city of Cerritos. In addition, as you can see in the photo, the screen... on the screen, there are currently existing overhead electrical power lines at the property. As part of this proposed project, these overhead electrical lines will be required to be placed underground in coordination with Southern California Edison. This is a view of the rear-looking southeast at the existing detached garage that has been converted into a dwelling in. The structure will be demolished as part of this proposal. And lastly, this is a view of the unpermitted enclosed patio at the rear of the home. This too will be demolished in conjunction with the construction of the new home. This is the proposed site plan, showing the footprint of the new home. The applicant's proposed to demolish the existing single-family residence and all structures on the property, and construct a new 9,694-square-foot two-story residence with two separate garages, and attach 664-square-foot two-car garage, and attach 424-square-foot one-car garage. As proposed, the project will meet all of the setback and lot coverage requirements. This is the adjacent neighbor plan. There is no direct alignment of windows with the adjacent properties to the north and south. Additionally, the subject property is separated from the properties to the east by an 82-foot rear yard setback. And therefore, any possible privacy issues arising from window placement have been mitigated through the project's design. This is the proposed first-floor plan. When completed, first-floor plan will... the first floor will include a living room, a family room, a dining room, a kitchen, a separate preparation kitchen and pantry, a laundry room, two bedrooms with bathrooms, a powder room, and a prayer room. This is the proposed second-floor plan. When completed, the second floor will include three bedrooms with bathrooms, a media room with a bathroom, a laundry room, an office, an Indian clothes room, and a bonus room. This is the proposed front elevation. The residence will be finished with a gray-colored smooth stucco and gray-colored trim. Wallet-colored porcelain siding will be featured on portions of the front inside elevations. This is the rear elevation. Each elevation of the new home will be... will feature decorative stone veneer columns that enhance the modern design of the residence. In addition, the balcony at the rear of the home will feature obscured glass railings so that the items on the balcony are not visible to the adjacent properties. This is the north side elevation. All windows and doors will be detailed with minimum 4-inch-wide midnight-colored trim. This is the south side elevations, which features the same architectural enhancements found on the other elevations. The architect has prepared a color palette and materials board for the Planning Commission, which is provided for you at the dais. All exterior colors and materials will be subjected... will be subject to the approval of the Department of Community Development to ensure that these elements complement the entire house and the surrounding homes. This concludes the PowerPoint presentation. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Precise Plan 2025-4, subject to all the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act review, and to date, staff has not received any comments as a result of the public hearing notice. Tonight, the architect is in the audience and to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony, for the report. Do any of my colleagues have any questions about this project?
I have a comment and a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Al.
So I review the project and look at the surrounding areas, and the condition of the subject property, should we say, is quite dilapidated, especially when it's flanked by two beautiful two-story buildings. Makes this particular property look so much worse. Now, I really, for that reason, I applaud the owners of this property for this project, and I'm sure, once this is completed, this part of the city will look so much more beautiful. And especially, the installation of the sidewalk and parkway will provide more safety and convenience to the residents nearby. My question is that there are two large trees in front of this... the current building, the property, near the curb. So I suppose those two trees belong to the city and will be removed along... well, with the demolition?
At the present time, the property goes to the curb, and as part of the conditions of approval, there will be a requirement to dedicate a sidewalk and parkway easement in which a city tree will be planted in place. So, in the demolition of this existing structure, and all the materials that are on there to make way for the development of this new project, this is the requirements that we have. This is one of the oldest tracts in the city. Every home on the block that was built was in this standard condition, and the requirement for the parkway tree and the parkway and sidewalk is a condition of approval for all of those developments along that street.
Thank you.
Commissioner... Commissioner?
So, having lived in the city and heard conversations, I am looking at the project-specific approvals, and one of the key things that I see is Condition 11, which is to observe that there's no work being done on Sunday and city-observed holidays, and being mindful of the neighbors to maintain those hours so we don't upset them or the surrounding houses. I think some of the... Condition 27, since you've already given examples, that's very nice. Air conditioning, 28. And this is just for my own clarification. Why do we use these metrics of 7.4-bell? Don't we typically use decibels? So 7.4 decibel would be 74... so 7.4 bells would be 74 decibels? It just... It's a confusing term. In fact, I kind of misread it. Is there a reason why we use bells?
Well, that's the industry standard as bells as opposed to decibels. From an air conditioning standpoint, we always know that you just carry the decimal over, and it's... And it does the same thing. Being here 25 years, that's the standard I've been using it.
Thank you. Thank you for... Again, this is the first plan I'm reading.
And then if I may, excuse me, Commissioner, I just want to applaud you for the observation on a few of these conditions of approval. For the benefit of the entire Commission, the standard conditions of approval are in place to regulate construction and construction hours, as you mentioned. We have several conditions in there to require construction fences for the preservation of debris and dust and water runoff, et cetera, during construction so that the impacts of construction are wholly contained on the subject property and don't spill over to adjacent properties. Whether it's this home or any residential project similar to this, these conditions of approval are established to... and in terms of the air conditioner, to lessen potential impacts to adjacent or surrounding neighbors. So applaud your observation.
Moving on to item number 34, electrical installation. This is more of a hobby than anything else. Electric vehicles, so if the family wishes to participate in the rebate that SE may have, participate in the rebate that SE may have, it's advisable that they work with SE because there is a second meter required if you are to benefit from it. But that again is more of advice than anything else. Otherwise, covenants. I see. So if the trees are being removed, are we installing the tree or is are we asking the property owner to install the tree?
The property owner will be installing the tree in conjunction with the observation and approval of our city arborist.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Anthony, just for my own clarification also, you mentioned that part of the building requirement is to for the homeowner is to pay for the sidewalk. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So is that strictly on that street or is that because most houses have a sidewalk built in? Is it just because of Bouchard, I'm familiar with the street and they don't have a?
Unfortunately for Bouchard Avenue, yes.
Yes, that's that's one of the exceptions.
If I may add, Vice Chair Reyes, you are correct. A majority of streets in the city have a dedicated sidewalk and easement already. And when the tracks were built, they were established that way. There are a few areas in the city where they were not. And so the property owner's property line goes all the way to curb. And so Mr. Anthony was discussing the dedication of the sidewalk and parkway easement. It's the dedication of that portion of the property when construction is complete to the city for that public sidewalk, public parkway and parkway tree.
So once it's constructed, the ownership and maintenance will belong to the city?
That's a very great question, Vice Chair Reyes. The maintenance will be that of the responsibility of the property owners. The as as Mr. Anthony mentioned, the tree, the improvements creating the sidewalk will be paid for by the property owners in conjunction with the city's Public Works Department. But generally speaking, for all residential properties in the city, the parkway area, so that's the area between the sidewalk and the street, including parkway trees, are the responsibility of the private property owner, although there's a dedicated easement to the city.
Because I was wondering, when there's an accident, where's the trip and fall in the sidewalk, they sue the city when the property is owned by the property owner?
So, yes, by way of the dedication of the easement, you know, it's the city's responsibility to have a sidewalk, have a parkway area. In terms of the maintenance, whether or not the ground cover, the grass, the tree is properly kept, it's living, it's organic plant material, that is a responsibility of the property owner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Add a couple of questions on exhibit 12, page 21. The first was about the the sliding, the door, the sliding glass. Is that accordion or sliding glass doors?
Those are, pardon me, those are accordion doors.
Thank you. And then my second question was about the balcony in the back. The the clear glass that comes across. Well, it looks here that it's short, but I it doesn't meet the requirements because it looks like it's kind of low.
So, thank you, Chair Polito. The for illustrative purposes on the elevation, you can also see that the glass appears clear. And for purposes of the elevation, it's to show you what's behind it. You have the windows and the doors on the patio. But the City of Cerritos requires any balcony railings or screening walls to be obscured, meaning you can't see through them and the appropriate height to screen any objects on balconies. So while the elevation shows it a little bit lower and clear glass, there is a note on the plans requiring and it's a condition of approval approval requiring obscured glass.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank you. And then now I'd like to open it to the public for any public comments. Okay, seeing none, I close public comments. Now I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of precise plan 2025 point 2025-4.
Motion to approve residential plan 2025-4. A second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Chauhan, second by Commissioner Al. Director Aguilera.
Thank you, Chair Polito. If I will, if just if it's amenable to the maker and the second of the motion. So the motion is to waive reading of and adopt a resolution of the planning commission approving the precise plan. So if that's amenable to the maker and the second, well, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote and looks like it is. Commissioner Al?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Chauhan?
Aye.
Commissioner Javery noted absent. Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Polito?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes by by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Next is item precise plan slash conditional use permit amendments.
Thank you, Chair Polito. Item 6B this evening are two entitlements. The first is a precise plan amendment and the second is a conditional use permit amendment to provide additional context on this item for the planning commission. A precise plan amendment is an amendment to the original or original development or subsequent expansions or remodels. And a conditional use permit, I'll give a little bit of background on that. So in the municipal code, every property in the City of Cerritos is designated a zoning designation. And within those zoning designations, the municipal code lists uses that are permitted, permitted primary uses, permitted accessory uses, and then also conditionally permitted uses. And conditionally permitted uses require review and consideration by the planning commission and city council to determine if the use that's proposed for subject property is generally in conformance with the goals and objectives of the general plan, the goals and objectives of the zoning designation for that property. And so what you have under six item 6B this evening is an industrial project at 17720 Studebaker Road where there was a previous conditional use permit and a previous precise plan. And before you are amendments to those conditional use permits and precise plans. So that's just a quick little background. And for details of this item this evening, I will defer your attention to Senior Planner Jeremy Lowe, after which both Mr. Lowe and myself are available to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. Good evening, Madam Chair and Cerritos Planning Commissioners. Property Owner Conan Properties is requesting approval of conditional use permit 2011-6A 2025 amendment to permit an automobile reconditioning facility with service to customers in an existing industrial building located at 17720 Studebaker Road. In addition, the applicant is requesting approval of precise plan 1979-16A 2025 amendment to remodel an existing 75,652 square foot industrial building on the property. For details on the proposal, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for a presentation. The subject property is a triangular 4.63 acre parcel generally located south of Artesia Boulevard and east of Studebaker Road. The subject property is zoned industrial commercial or MC. This is an enlarged aerial view of the subject property. The property was developed in various stages beginning in 1965. Currently, the property contains two buildings, a warehouse office building measuring approximately 75,652 square feet in floor area and a 1,565 square foot garage building located along the northern property line. The buildings are currently used as an automobile reconditioning facility and administrative offices in support of the car group, which owns several dealerships in the Cerritos Auto Square. This photo shows the existing conditions of the subject property. This is a view looking southeast at the existing industrial building. This northern end of the property and building facade is the primary location of the proposed improvements before you this evening. Here we have a view of the existing industrial building looking northeast. As mentioned, the applicant has requested approval of conditional use permit 2011-6A 2025 amendment, an amendment to a conditional use permit that was approved in 2011. In 2011, an automobile reconditioning facility servicing vehicles intended exclusively for sale at the Cerritos Auto Square was approved through the conditional use permit process. Tonight, the request is to amend the conditional use permit to allow the facility to provide service to privately owned commercial trucks and vehicles. Pursuant to the Cerritos Municipal Code, automobile repair is conditionally permitted and the inclusion of privately owned vehicles substantially conforms to the originally permitted automobile reconditioning facility use. In addition to the conditional use permit amendment, the applicant has also requested approval of precise plan 1979-16A 2025 amendment, a proposal to remodel the existing industrial building. Interior improvements include the creation of a customer intake area and a waiting lounge, public restrooms, offices, employee locker rooms, and an employee break room. Exterior improvements include the installation of new facade materials and finishes to align with Ford Pro branding and to modernize the existing building. This is the proposed site plan showing the proposed improvements at the northern end of the existing property. While the exterior remodel focuses on the northern end, new landscaping and parking lot improvements are proposed throughout. On this side is the proposed north floor plan, which is the area of improvements to accommodate customers. Here's the proposed south floor plan. This side of the interior features service bays, part storage and parts receiving. This is the proposed roof plan. The roof design features new and existing roof mounted mechanical units, which will be fully screened from view from surrounding properties to meet Cerritos Municipal Code screening requirements. As proposed, units will be screened with corrugated metal panels. The applicant has hired a California licensed landscape architect who has prepared a conceptual landscape plan for the subject property. Drought tolerant shrubs will be planted within existing and new planters to help soften the building's facade and secure parking area walls. Crape myrtle, queen palm and date palm trees will be planted between existing trees along Studebaker Road and new western red bud trees will be planted at the front of the existing building. The proposed landscape design features new ground cover and dense landscaping on the front elevation to soften the facade when viewed from Studebaker Road. Upon completion, the total amount of landscaping on site will be 31,260 square feet or approximately 28% of the unbuilt area, which meets the minimum Cerritos Municipal Code landscape requirements. These are proposed building elevations. At the top of this slide is the west elevations facing Studebaker Road and on the bottom is the north elevation. The proposed exterior improvements will modernize the north, south and west elevations with gray colored aluminum metal panels and darker gray colored stucco. A new glass panel garage door will replace the existing solid metal garage door into the facility. The northeast corner adjacent to the new garage door will be clad in lightweight aluminum panels in the tenant Ford Pro's signature blue color. The existing building features a combination of stucco and exposed aggregate tilt up walls, which will remain. And as previously mentioned, corrugated metal panels will fully screen existing and proposed roof mounted mechanical units. On this slide is the applicant's proposed paint color and material board that shows actual paint colors, glass color and material samples. The paint color and material board has been placed on the dais for the planning commission's review. In addition to the colored elevations, the architect has provided a perspective rendering to show how the remodeled industrial building will look upon completion. This is a perspective rendering looking southeast. That concludes details of the proposed project. Before you this evening is consideration of a conditional use permit amendment to add automobile repair services for privately owned commercial vehicles and a precise plan amendment for interior and exterior improvements at the existing industrial building. Additionally, I would like to note that this project has been evaluated in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and has been determined to be categorically exempt from review. A notice of a public hearing regarding this item was mailed to owners of property within 500 feet of the subject property on March 21st, 2025, which is at least 10 days prior to the public hearing this evening as required by the Cerritos Municipal Code. Notices were also posted at the city's four designated posting boards on March 21st, 2025. In addition, the staff report and all exhibits were posted on the city's website. In response to the notice and agenda report for this item, staff received one emailed public comment in support of the project. At this time, it is recommended that the planning commission reviews and discusses the information provided, conducts a public hearing and adopts resolutions recommending approval of the entitlements discussed this evening by the city council. This concludes staff presentation. Staff would be happy to answer any questions at this time. The project applicants are also available to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe, for the report. At this time, I would like to open up for questions, comments by my colleagues. Commissioner Chauhan, do you have any questions or comments?
I am so glad to see investments being made in our city by businesses. It further increases our stability for our city and investment by industry is needed, especially in that section of the town where there is mostly industry. Questions I have would be more in the area of the project specific. And again, ours are exactly the same as residential areas. Can somebody explain to me what it means on condition nine, 10, 11? For some reason, I thought these were existing buildings and they're just working around them.
Yes, Commissioner, so during construction, generally speaking, sometimes public improvements are damaged by construction vehicles. Generally speaking, they're very heavy trucks. They're delivering heavy materials. So sometimes curbs that are driven over might get damaged. Walls might get hit. Even street lights sometimes get hit. And so these standard conditions of approval for projects are to repair anything damaged by construction.
And then I would also add that the standard conditions of approval for this project are standard and applicable to any industrial industrial or commercial projects as applicable. There may be in scenarios some that don't need to be applied to the prospective project, but they are a set of standard conditions of approval previously prepared by city staff and as approved by the planning commission for the most, you know, we can, the more the most foreseeable conditions that may need to be imposed on such a project. In scenarios where we haven't thought of something by way of the standard conditions of approval, that is when the project specific conditions of approval come in. But they're just generally speaking as applied or as applicable to the project before you.
And then as far as it relates to this property, number 45, electrical meters. I assume that they're going to be servicing EV vehicles. Would there be capacity to do that?
That might be a question for the applicants, but as a service and reconditioning facility, I imagine they could service EVs. In fact, when staff visited the site, I observed an Amazon truck being serviced.
I have no further questions.
Vice Chair Reyes?
So we've approved this in 2011. The use was approved as an automobile reconditioning facility, but in the code, it's a comparable use to what's called automobile repair. Specifically, we called it a reconditioning facility because it was to prepare used vehicles for sale as certified used.
Pre-owned, state of use, pre-owned.
Exactly.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Commissioner Au, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think this plan is pretty thorough.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open it, the public hearing for public comments. And then Commissioner Chauhan, I think you had a question for the, that may be answered by the applicant. I didn't know if you wanted them to answer your specific question at this time.
Not necessarily. Ford is very heavily invested in EVs, and if they are, they're going to be the customer that's servicing these vehicles. That perhaps there was a capacity need there.
Thank you. So I don't see any comments, so I'll close the public hearing at this time. And then Ms. Aguilera, should we take both resolutions separately?
Unless it's the desire of the Planning Commission, we can entertain one motion. If the maker of the motion is recommending one way or the other for both resolutions, or if it's a preference of the commission, we can bifurcate the two.
Okay, I would like to entertain a motion at this time for item 6B.
I would like to make a motion that we combine both of these conditional approvals simultaneously so that the resolution's conditional permit 2011-6A 2025 and the precise plan 1979-16A in parentheses 2025 be considered and approved.
Second motion.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Chauhan, and then a second by Vice Chair Reyes. Director Aguilera?
Yes, thank you, Chair Polito. Due to technical difficulties, we will continue to do oral roll call vote.
I think we can try it. I think it was.
You want to try it again?
As an operator.
Allow me one moment. We will try again. So if I may, we have a motion by Commissioner Chauhan, and we have a second by Vice Chair Reyes. And I have activated the electronic voting. All votes in. Thank you. Motion passes by a vote of four to zero. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Reyes would like to say something?
Yeah, I would just like to congratulate the owner for investing in the city like Commissioner Chauhan said. And thank you for improving that facility and adding more service to our community. And other people within the community will be visiting our city for the services that you guys rendered. Thank you again.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. And I also like to add that, yeah, this is a beautiful project, and I'm glad that the branding of Ford is on there. And then how it kind of extends north of Studebaker, so it's kind of an extension of the Auto Square. So it's good to see that there's this attention and care for our city. So I wanted to congratulate you on the project as well. Next, I would like to go to item 7A, reports from commission liaison, Dr., I mean doctor.
Director Aguilera? Thank you, Chair Polito. I just want to first take a moment to congratulate Chair Polito and Vice Chair Reyes for your nomination and being appointed to be the Vice Chair and Chair of the Planning Commission. And to all the commissioners, I very much, both the community development, public work staff, we very much look forward to the opportunity to continue to work with you and to support you in any capacity needed. And with that, the last report for me is that the next meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, May 7. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Aguilera. Next is item 7B, reports from commissioners. I would like to start with Commissioner Chauhan.
I have no report other than I am enormously grateful to Sofia Say for putting me on this commission, but also overall to the city and the pride that we all have in participating in making sure our city remains beautiful, remains vibrant, remains economically diverse so that we can all continue to enjoy the benefits of it. I am so glad to have my first meeting over with.
Thank you, Commissioner Chauhan. Commissioner Au?
It's an honor to be able to serve on the Planning Commission for our beautiful city of Cerritos. I'd like to take this opportunity to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Councilwoman Jennifer Hahn for her trust and her trust in me, her confidence in me. And I promise I'll do as best as I can to serve the city I call home for almost 30 years. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Au. Commissioner, I'm Vice Chair Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing to report when it comes to commission as a new commissioner, but I would like also to thank Councilmember Polito for giving me the opportunity and the trust to be here with some outstanding leader of the community. And I would like to thank the council member. I think they really, really took time to select the people that they wanted in this commission because I'm, you know, I'm a little biased, but this is one of, I mean, I'm really happy to be with Benjamin, Mukerid, and Gloria to work with them. I'm looking forward to all their experience. There's a lot for me to learn from these people. So looking forward to learn my job and hopefully represent the community and also represent Councilmember Polito while doing my job as a commissioner. So again, thank you again, and looking forward with the staff and wonderful staff. Thank you for all the work that you do because you guys make the city look good and make us look good up here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. First of all, I just wanted to open up and acknowledge some people that are here today. Mayor Yokiyama, Councilwoman Hong, Councilwoman Sofia Say, Councilwoman Sofia Say, and my wonderful husband, Mark Polito, Councilman. In addition, I wanted to also acknowledge my daughter, Malia, who's here. Artesia Councilwoman Melissa Ramoso, and bulletin planning commissioner Arnold Dino, sorry. Sorry, sorry, Arnold. Secondly, I just wanted to congratulate Vice Chair Reyes and then my colleagues, Commissioner Au, Commissioner Chauhan. I look forward to working with all of you. You're like the best and brightest people in our community. You have served, your commitment to serve the public, our great city is to be commended, and I look forward to working with you all year, or the next couple of months, actually. And then I just wanted to also mention the things that I attended. I attended March 19, the meeting and reception for outgoing councilmembers Barrows, Lonkey, and Voe. Wish them luck. And then on March 26, I attended the oath and mayoral transition in the beautiful Performing Arts Center. Wanted to congratulate again Mayor Yokiyama, Vice Chair, I mean Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, and then the newly elected councilmembers again, Jennifer Hong, Sofia Say, and then my husband who's returned to the City Council, Mark Polito. It was a wonderful event to see all the public comments and the great turnout in this, in our beautiful facility. It was, I think, one of the biggest turnouts for any oath and swearing that I've been to. It just is a testament to the new leadership, our beautiful staff who have worked hard, specifically Chelsea, who worked hard for that event in concert with her colleagues, and then the performing arts staff who do a good job day to day, just not for that event. But Eddie, any concert, any show that there, they go, they're one of the best staffs that we have here. And then I also wanted to say that I attended the March 27 city council meeting. All of you for council meeting, it was a great one. It was till 1:00 a.m., so you had a heavy agenda. And then I just want to congratulate because my colleagues here on the dais were appointed that day. So it was good to see the enormous amount of talent and the trust that you place in all these individuals to serve. I look forward to hearing the great things that they'll do for our city from here and long into the future. And I think that's the end of my report. And then, so now I adjourn for the special meeting and the regular meeting of the Planning Commission.
Perfect.